The minutes. Do we have any comments, corrections? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item one B, approval of the minutes of the Senator Point Tour on April twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Move approval.
I would amend that motion. I will second it, but I would offer an amendment in that I noticed in there it lists Deb Shore as the Chair and Kristi Yocum as the Vice Chair. I would amend to-
That needs to be amended.
Change to the current Chair and Vice Chair and remove Deb Shore and add Commissioner Matt Shulte. With that, I would second.
So with those corrections, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item two, Claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through May ninth, twenty twenty-three. And on note for the Commissioners, there is an amendment to the payroll.
All right. I would move approval of the claims processed through May ninth to be amended to include payroll dispersments through May third, twenty twenty-three.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claims with the amendment. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Two B, approval of a claim to El Centro de Las Americas in the amount of six thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
I would move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the claim to El Centro de Las Americas. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Abstain as I serve on the board.
Motion carries four zero with an abstention. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be proved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. They are the approval of: A, right-of-way contracts with the following: Bison AG LLC, South One Hundred Seventy-Sixth Street and Firth Road in the amount of a hundred and thirty-six dollars; Two, Daryl and Lynette D. Tesel, South One Hundred Thirty-Fourth Street and Stagecoach Road, in the amount of one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars; Three, Danny and Kendra Schaefer, North Ninety-Eighth Street, in the total amount of nine hundred and seventy-five dollars; Four, Kent D. and Diane S. Heidbrink, North Ninety-Eighth Street, in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars; Five, Marvin L. and Tamara L. Lambie, North Ninety-Eighth Street, in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five dollars; B, received and placed and filed the annual reports and community redevelopment projects from the following: The City of Hickman and the Village of Hallam; C, received and placed and filed the following reports for April twenty twenty-three, Assessor Register of Deeds, Clerk at the District Court, Records and Information Management, and County Clerk.
I'll move approval of the consent item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Any discussion?
I'd just say, see a lot of activity on North Ninety-Eighth Street there still, so appreciate the right-of-ways being claimed, I guess I'll say, for that, for the expansion there, so.
Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item four is the public hearing for the Lancaster County Rural Transit applications for funds to provide public transportation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, and fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five.
We will now open the public hearing. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you very much. Sorry, forgot.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you for placing me on today's agenda. The history of Lancaster County Public Rural Transit is fairly well-known to this Board, so I won't go into that. But the ridership in our current two-year period is at over twenty-six hundred riders, which is not quite back to pre-COVID numbers, but I fully expect over the next two years to get to there, so we're quite happy with that. We continue to primarily be a source of transportation for seniors, which make up almost ninety-six percent of our ridership. Three percent is special needs, including a couple of young people in Roke and Waverly that use us to go to jobs a couple days a week. And then I know people smile when I say I'm happy we have one percent other, but it took me five years to get people convinced this just wasn't for seniors, so I'm very proud of that number. Our current match during this fiscal year is forty-four thousand five hundred and eleven from the county. Excuse me, up to that. And you'll note that the current request could be much higher, in fact, thirty-three percent higher. The reason for that is the cost of fuel. When I came before you two years ago, I did estimates at a cost of two dollars and eighteen cents a gallon. I have paid as much as two dollars and forty-six cents a gallon over the past two years due to some things happening. We're still on budget, but it's been tight a few months, I will not lie. This year, the fuel projections for the next two years are kind of all over the board, and as a result, I've went with the highest estimate of three dollars and twenty-three cents a gallon. We certainly hope that won't happen, but I prefer to come back in two years and say, well, we stayed under budget as opposed to, I need more money, please. We'll continue to be fiscally responsible, but I'm just asking your permission today to request two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the Nebraska Department of Transportation and federal and state funds. We expect to be approved for that, and that you have a local match of not quite sixty thousand over the next two years. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I have one question. You talked about the other riders, which is a great service to the county. How, is there anything we could do to help boost that?
Just, you know, continue to promote that we are public transportation. There was a lot of confusion. Some of it was brought on by the marketing that was done by my predecessor. You know, they said we were a great opportunity for seniors. And we even had clients who rode with us, and they were like, well, I'd like to take my grandkids back to Waverly with me. I wish your program would do that. We can. You know, it's just a matter. Any citizen can ride as long as they are either living inside the city of Lincoln, going outside the city limit for one of their boardings, or vice versa.
Thanks. It seems like it's extremely valuable.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You had said sixty thousand dollars. Is that over two years or each year for two years?
That's, that's over the full two-year period, twenty-three through twenty-five, and it's, it's up to. You know, you won't be cutting us a check for sixty thousand dollars. It's just matching up to the fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and something, so.
I, I'm not very familiar with, with this.
My apologies.
Rural Transit. It's all right. I'm just curious. Is there a fare? Is it free? Like, what does it look like for people using the service?
The fee is two dollars per boarding.
Okay.
So if we pick someone up, say, in Waverly, they have two stops in Lincoln, and then go home, their fee would be six dollars for those three stops.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate the work you're doing for our community.
Thank you.
Are there, is there any other one, anyone else ready to comment during this public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We can move on to the next item. New business?
New business, item five A, resolution instructing Lancaster County Public Rural Transit to apply for federal funds available under Section Fifty-three-eleven of the Federal Transit Act to provide public transportation in Lancaster County and the bordering communities of Adams, Cortland, Suresco, Eagle, and Greenwood for fiscal year twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five B, is a resolution in the matter authorizing the County Board Chair or Vice Chair to sign the Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number One, amending County Contract C dash twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-two with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for additional preliminary engineering services.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer, this item and the item that precedes it. So as standard, first, we authorize the Chair to sign, and then, second, we have the actual agreement itself. It's for the bridge located on Arbor Road, just a little east of North Twenty-seventh Street. And so this is a project that is funded with MPO funds, and we are excited to get going. This bridge is going to take a while. It has a number of really complex geometry issues and a number of complex environmental issues. And so we're happy to keep proceeding, literally proceeding down the road with it.
Move approval.
I'll move, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five C, the Professional Services Agreement Supplement Number One, amending County Contract C dash twenty-two dash zero-two-eight-two with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for preliminary engineering services.
I'll move approval of five C.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five D, is proclaiming May fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as National Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska.
Good morning. Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. Thank you for allowing me to have this brought before you for your consideration. Every year since nineteen sixty-three, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Day. And then that has evolved over the years. The National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial is in Washington, D.C., was dedicated in nineteen ninety-one. And this year, Deputy Troy Bailey, who passed away in twenty twenty of a heart attack, he died on September, or on September eleventh of twenty twenty. His death was ruled of line of duty death, and he will be included on the wall this year, so it's somewhat meaningful to us. There will be a number of events. Saturday, this coming Saturday, is the candlelight vigil in Washington when his name will be read on the wall. On Monday, the fifteenth, is the national memorial service on the South Lawn of the U.S. Capitol. On Tuesday, there will be a service at the Hall of Justice next door, and Troy's name will be included on the memorial out front there. That'll be at noon. And then next, the following Friday, the nineteenth, will be a service at the Nebraska Law Enforcement Memorial in Grand Island on Foner Park grounds. So kind of a busy week next week, and I'd appreciate your indulgence in proclaiming that week National Police Week.
I'm glad to move approval of this, and I'd just add, I want to confirm, Terry, I got the date right. Noon on Tuesday, the sixteenth, when you'll be having the ceremony.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Noon the sixteenth. Thank you.
And I would second. We have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I just want, is there a significance to the date? Is there a significance to May fifteenth?
Yeah, I don't know how that date was chosen, to be honest with you. That was chosen in nineteen sixty-three, so I don't know how that date was chosen.
I just wondered if there was an event or something that preceded that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Item five E, recommendation from County Engineering to award a bid to Pavers Incorporated for South Fifty-Sixth Street and countywide asphalt resurfacing and patching at an estimated cost of one million eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer, the exhibit that I am putting on the overhead shows areas where we are overlaying the street, mainly South Fifty-Sixth Street, and then areas where we are doing significant full-depth patch of mainly intersections, so.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five F, special permit, special event permit application from Ben Cahoon, Off-the-Clock Events LLC, doing business as Pink Gorilla Events for the Market-to-Market Relay on October seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Good morning.
Hello. Yes, I'm here for a special event permit application on behalf of Pink Gorilla Events for carrying out this year's Market-to-Market Relay that spans from Omaha as the starting point to Lincoln as the endpoint. Included in that will be three exchanges, the first one in Eagle, Nebraska, and then the entire route will follow on the MOPAC Trail for the relays that, excuse me, for the exchange points that are a part of Lancaster County. The first runner will be coming in at roughly one ten PM based on previous year data, and this will be the sixteenth anniversary of the Market-to-Market Relay and working with Lancaster County to get everything set up and ready to go, so.
This event has a long, successful history.
Yes, yes, definitely, and it's one of those events that's become kind of a staple across Nebraska. This year, we're going to have about six hundred and fifty teams come in, but I'm glad to answer any other questions that any of you may have over the event and safety and anything else that goes along with it.
Where all do the runners come from?
You know, a lot of the running, running population will come from Omaha and Lincoln. I ran it last year, for example, and so what we did was we, we were, it's a team of seven to eight people. So being from Lincoln, we would drive to Omaha, drop the team off, and then that's kind of how it works from there, is one runner has your slap-on bracelet baton, essentially, and the rest of the team will drive the van or whatever vehicle you're, you're transporting your team to the next exchange point and so on and so forth until your team finishes the race and ride by PBA.
Really exciting to see you doing this again. We're glad. You've had so much success, and you're well aware of the concerns by the Sheriff's Department and the Engineering Department, and you're, you're familiar with that whole process. We anticipate another successful event. I'd move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Hey, before we move on with the agenda, can we, I think it'd be appropriate if we read the proclamation into the record for National Police Week.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you just read that?
Just take a pause and do that.
Yes, I'd be happy to. "Before the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, in the matter proclaiming May fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as National Police Week and May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the County of Lancaster, Nebraska. To recognize National Police Week twenty twenty-three and Peace Officers Memorial Day and on to the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, County Board, issues the following proclamation. Whereas there are approximately eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, over twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed or died in the line of duty, including the following four members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. One, Deputy Sheriff William Johnson, died in nineteen fifty-nine after suffering a heart attack following a prisoner transport. Two, Sergeant Franklin Fur, died in nineteen seventy-three after suffering a heart attack while serving a search warrant. Three, Deputy Sheriff Craig D. Dodge, was killed in nineteen eighty-seven responding to a domestic disturbance. Four, Deputy Sheriff Troy Bailey, who died in twenty twenty after suffering a heart attack three days prior. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C., Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including two hundred and twenty-four officers who died in the line of duty in twenty twenty-two and three hundred and thirty-two officers killed in previous years. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their law enforcement agencies, and that members of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore be it resolved, the County Board does hereby proclaim the week of May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty to twenty-three, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established themselves as an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Now be, and be it further resolved, the County Board does hereby proclaim May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, as Peace Officers Memorial Day to honor the sacrifice and service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. In witness thereof, we have here and to sign to May ninth, twenty twenty-three, by the Board of the County Commissioners of the County of Lancaster, Nebraska."
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, I believe that brings us to item five G, a contract with Advanced Door and Dock Systems LLC to provide a unit price on overhead door and replacement services. The cost of the county is not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Five H is a recommendation from the City of Lincoln Transportation Utilities Solid Waste Department to award a contract for waste and recyclables collection service.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. That brings us to item six, the legislative update.
I believe we have anything new. For that, we can move on to public comment.
Item seven, public comment. Those wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Seeing none, we can proceed.
Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners and representatives from the county villages and cities will hold a meeting on Thursday, May eleventh, at eight thirty AM in Room One Thirteen of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at ten thirty AM in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at nine AM with the Board of Equalization immediately following in Room One Twelve of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on ALO Channel Two and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are also available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item nine is executive session.
I move we go into exec, executive session for the purpose of pending and potential litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest at nine twenty-five AM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
We are now in executive session for pending and potential litigation and legal advice and to protect the public interest.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session at nine forty-eight AM. Please call the roll.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Amundson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.
Move adjourn.
I move second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Amundson.
Yes.
Schulte.
Yes.
Flaherty.
Yes.
Vest.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero.